Meeting coming over, we'll have to pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Upper Chatchest Township Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting, April 7th, 2022. George, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Bahaco.
Here.
Commissioner Gorioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Lisa Katania.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
And myself, George Needles, present.
Before we get into our meeting tonight, we have a presentation for the MIPC stormwater waiver request.
Hello, everyone. My name is Caroline Kerr. I'm the maintenance lead at MIPC Pipeline. I'm here today to talk about our project for replacement of pipe along the right-of-way from I-95 right here through up to CSX Railroad right here. So the project is replacement of 2,030 feet of 8-inch and 10-inch pipeline along this right-of-way. The pipeline is going to be installed about 10 to 15 feet away from existing 8- and 10-inch pipeline that is already right there. So, I don't know, the new, it's hard to show you here, but the old pipelines right here and the other ones about 10 to 15 feet away in the same location there. The existing line that is there will be free of product, nitrogen purged, and routed on the end and will stay in the place there. So, project is very simple, a replacement of the pipe, installing new pipe, and leaving the existing pipe in place. As part of the project, we do understand that the township has a request of us to look at an alternative way into the site, not going through the residential way right here. So, MIPC is currently working with CSX Railroad. They have an access here that you can kind of go down and around the rails right here, and there is a fence right here. So, we have been in discussions with them to have access through that fence. Thus far with our discussions, they have concerns over safety in their site. So, we're having trouble getting full approval from them. But, we are fully aware of the township's concerns. We're working on it. And, we would like to know if the township does have any contacts there, which I do understand from George, that you may, that we could reach out to them so they can, we can work together to get this alternative access into the site. Does anyone have any questions on the project?
Yeah, I have a question. Why are we leaving the old pipe there? If you're cutting it and capping?
Yeah, so, there's no threat of leaving the old pipe there. We have the right-of-way there. So, we're gonna leave it in place so that we don't have any more destruction, construction work to remove it from the site. There's, there's no harm or threat in leaving it there, so we're gonna leave it in place there.
Now, you're here tonight for the presentation, but also I see it's for a waiver for stormwater? What is, is that part of the presentation or just the access from CSX for our help?
Yeah, I mean, this is, yeah, we are here for the stormwater waiver. That's why I wanted to present the project to you. As part of it, we had to submit for a grading permit, and as part of that, there is a stormwater aspect of that.
Let me, I can expand on that if, so that everyone is aware of what's going on. Under your stormwater ordinance, it's not, the stormwater ordinance has regulations concerning additional impervious, but they also have if there is a certain amount of disturbance. This project is 2.4, 2.7 acres of disturbance. So, it is actually going through the county MPDES program, and it, it actually triggers our stormwater ordinance. So, my suggestion, we know that we have several problems at the ends of many of these streets in Twin Oaks, that in lieu of them doing a stormwater facility within that right-of-way, they would give us a fee in lieu for, with that stormwater project, which would help, I think, the residents of Twin Oaks much more than what we would get out of it for the, for the right-of-way.
Correct. And MIPC is in favor of having those discussions with the township so that we can better help the residents of the area.
There is no existing stormwater issues along the residential area in the pipeline that exists today that we know of?
What I'm saying is that we're aware of, of stormwater issues within the neighborhood of Twin Oaks.
Right. Anything from the pipeline now?
Right now, there are three cross pipes that are, there's, under the access road, and they'll need to get cleared because right now they are filled with sediment.
Does anybody have any questions?
Boy? Just going back to the existing line, what, what type, what is it servicing now? The content of the line, what, what's inside of it?
The lines right now have refined products in them, and the new lines will have the same products in it.
So, when you abandon a line, will you empty it and make sure that, and then, and then you cap it? Okay.
Yeah, they will be nitrogen purged and pigged, and all the product will be removed from the line.
Okay. And the amount of the fee in lieu of it, was there, has there been a monetary amount established yet for that or discussing with it?
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Everybody good? Thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Yep. If you could just stay for a few seconds, I do have to open it up to the citizens' comment. We do do it online, so if there's anybody that calls in to have any questions regarding your presentation and anything that may be on our agenda. At this time, I'll be opening it up to the residents on, that are not able to attend the meeting. They could be dialing 571-748-4021. And that number again is 571-748-4021. And entering 1-811-87931-POUND. As I said, enter 1-811-87931-POUND to unmute your phone, star six. Will be, when you unmute your phone, state your name and address and telephone number if you want to get us to get back to you. And we'll be given two to three minutes for the lines to be open. Thank you. Make note, there is no citizen comment by telephone. We will go citizen comment here tonight at the meeting. Is there any citizen comments tonight from the audience? Note, there's no citizen comments from the audience tonight. We will go into our meeting. Thank you very much. We'll start out with our township professionals. We'll start out with the engineer report. Lisa Katania, Katania, engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. First thing on my agenda is the Somerset Drainage Projects. We received six bids for that remedial project. The low bid was that of JNS in the amount of $123,752. We are recommending that award pending whatever funding agreement that, that the township has entered into, and I don't know what that is at this point. Creekside Village, we went out to four landscapers to get, again, remedial action from the developer who's more or less left the site. We received two bids. The low bid, and I, your report says 19310. The low bid was 19797. The original bid, I called him and asked him to give me a revised price because he only put five trees in, there should be 10. So, the additional monies that 19797 adds the five trees, five shade trees that Costa actually put in, and then they needed to be removed because they were within the, the right-of-way for the, for Southern Delaware County authorities' war. I, I'm not sure where, where, where we're going with that. I haven't spoken to Commissioner Neary at this point. The, the next bid was $31,000, so we've got quite a discrepancy. Brightview, who, who is the low bidder, is actually the landscaper for Creekside Village.
What, I forget, I remember reading the report, but what, what's available in the escrow account?
$10,000.
$10,000, right? Okay, so, we have to make a decision about the other $9,200. Okay, thank you.
Yes. The Boothwin Firehouse reverse subdivision resolution, Dave wasn't able to make, Dave Damon was not able to make it tonight. You do have a resolution in your packet. It's pretty cut and dry, if I can say that. It's very cut and dry. And, other than some minor changes that they have on the plans, which Dave actually sent yesterday, everything seems to be in order. The MIPC waiver, we talked about, that, that stormwater waiver, I think, is something that can help the community. So, I would recommend that, that waiver. I believe in your packets, you have a listing of all of the road program. So, there's a street list. The total for the, I'm gonna call it a wish list, How we got 33 cents, I don't know, but plus or minus 20%, 33 cents. So, we will need to get a final list. We do have an authorization to bid that road program, as you recall, last month. I will tell you that just in the past week, the tonnage price went up $3. So, the longer we, we hold, the more expensive it's going to be.
So, the list we have in front of us, I mean, is not, it's part of the wish list from the beginning? Or did, did we cut it a little bit, George?
Before everybody leaves tonight, I would like to go through that and pare that down to your numbers. So, yours, yours is done. Yep, and we've done a couple so far. So, we have, I have one copy that is going around that we can kind of hack away at.
So, even if we, even if we go through this list at the end of tonight and bid it out, and it doesn't come as high as it is on this paper tonight, we still able to cut a little bit to get to where our number would be? If we had to?
Best bet would be to...
We're pretty close to it now.
We're pretty close. So, the best bet would be to go through, pick out, to get to your number, and designate one item on there as an alternate, and then we can pull one from each ward as a separate alternate and bid it like that. So, that way, we have a base bid that we know can be completed, and if the bids are low enough, we could, we could add in those last ones.
Right. Just so everyone's aware, last year when we did this, we had the tonnage at $85 a ton. That's how we estimated it. And this year, we're doing 100 because of what we've gotten for some other communities. Obviously, those other communities aren't as large. They didn't do as large a program. But, just to be on the safe side, because we have no idea where this paving is going, we kept it at $100 a ton.
Okay. Now, I just want to make sure we get it out tonight, so we're, we all know what we pay to get swamps now, so.
Right. It could go down.
A penny?
Keep your fingers crossed. Yes. The stormwater projects, Putt sent over a list. I've revised that list and, and the priorities. We are probably going to have a public works meeting. We were supposed to have the meeting on the 19th. However, we've gotten word from the Delaware County Planning Department that they are having a stakeholders' meeting for the new stormwater ordinance that the county is working on as a template. So, that is the same time as our public works meeting. So, Jean Marie and, and Putt and I are gonna come up with a different date sometime next week. Though I should have, have that, the stormwater project priority list, and then we'll give that to the board. The board can decide where, where we should be spending the, the funding that we do have. Some other things that are going on, you do have a copy of my report. In your packet is, is the change orders. We have the final invoice for community development block grant for the Chichester Avenue Streetscape that will close out that project. We have some final quantity change orders that are involved with that. We have spent almost every nipple that the county has given us. We, we've maxed that out in order to keep some of the multimodal funds available for the second phase. So, we will have that on the agenda next week. I also have a, an additional invoice for the multimodal portion of the project, and that's in the amount of $46,217.50. I believe it may be in your packet. We sent that over this afternoon. Willowbrook Clubhouse, I contacted them. They have completed the work on the basin that was part of the punch list, which makes their punch list complete, with the exception of giving me a revised as-built. So, depending on when we can get the as-built, either I'll have that final escrow release at the meeting Thursday. Probably not. My guess is we'll hold that until the main meeting. But, that project is essentially closed out from a construction standpoint. Duncan, I can report that we have the final plans, and based on our cursory review, we think that that project is also ready for, for a final approval and recording of the plans. We have a preliminary final resolution already. So, they've satisfied many of the comments on that resolution. The Gear Plastics, that cost estimate was approved. The agreements have been signed. The plans have been signed for recording, so that construction project, that addition, will be starting shortly as well. Working with, with Brian to put together grant application for, let's do the end of the month, for the CBL fields, to do the walkway around the CBL fields, as well as the fitness stations, some landscaping, and, and the first part of, of the parking lot. Brian, Brian Seidel and I are working on that. The thermoplastic pavement bid, we, we received those bids. That's in my report. Just wanted to mention that I wanted to do two things. One, talk about it at the public works meeting. It's a $50,000 commitment. So, I want to make sure that everybody's on board with that from, from public works side before we bring it to the board. But as well, we're gonna check to see if it's available in Co-Stars. That may be a cheaper price. That's all I have at this point, unless anybody has any questions.
I did, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Sure.
Somerset Drainage Project, that, that was blowed by a lot. You said you were gonna check with, check the contractor, but Jed, he can handle it?
He seems like he can handle it, yes. And I have a feeling they came through Falcon, because two of the references were Falcon Engineering. So, who did the design project?
Any update on the street study? Parking study?
Yeah. You know what? I talked to Al today, and I didn't ask them about it.
We're putting, we're putting together the survey to send out to the residents.
Okay, okay. That, that is correct. All right, thank you.
Okay. Speaking of the clubhouse, the Yorktown Clubhouse, or not the Yorktown Clubhouse, the Willowbrook Clubhouse. Who's responsible for Mill Road at that point? Because, you know, the work they did last year? I mean, I'm back and forth to CVS all the time, Kevin, and I'm coming out there, and that road's really gotten beaten up. Who, who did that work last year? Do you know?
The, the paving work for the township? The, the stormwater?
It looks like, it looks like they, they, you know, dug into the road. They had a road opening permit of some type. And now, they look like they're subsiding.
I'll take, I was passed there. I didn't notice it, but I'll take a look and see whether or not it's something that it was either Gessler or, or it would be the Willowbrook contract.
I keep meaning to mention it too, but I keep forgetting because...
Is it in front of the catch basin?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The other question, and the rain reminds me, and the calls I got today. Are we certain with, with the, with the property below Burkle, the Worsalis property, that that is actually engineeringly correct in terms of its ability to remediate the, the water runoff?
So, so the, the answer to that is, they have provided us with certified engineering report that says that if all the work is completed, along with Burkle, and there is work that needs to go downstream to be completed, if all of that is done, that should be sufficient. Of course, we'll find out, and, and of course, the word was, before that, we haven't had any problems in like two years. Well...
We haven't had a significant rainfall like this.
I, I was in, in the two-and-a-half-foot-wide swell today.
Okay.
Stormwater flow today. There is absolutely, to answer your question, the report, my review of the report says that the proof is in the pudding, more or less. We need to see the, the design calculations and plans for locations of the various things that, that Mr. McComby referred to in his report when they get their grading permit. Right now, one of the biggest issues, there is water that's coming from the Worsalis site from 8-19 into the Burkle site. Burkle is, it's holding some water, and then it's, it's gushing right through 1703 Eric's rear yard. They did have some silk fence up, except that's all falling down.
Right.
And, just, there's just nothing slowing the water down. The water is coming very rapidly through, through the Burkle property at this point.
One, one of my concerns is that my understanding from some of the neighbors is that more trees have been dumped back there. You know, I guess, work that he's doing in other places, he's taking trees and dumping them back in the, at the very back of the property. And more chips have been added as well. So, I don't know if that's gonna impact it as well, but we can look at it.
Well, I, candidly, if they are putting more things back there, it's gonna slow the water flow down. So, coming from Burkle property, which is, the problem is, is that it's rushing out, and it's gushing out because they don't have anything to stop it there. So, we were, it just, and if I can just jump in here, we were in court with them this past week. The Worsalis did what he was supposed to do within the, within the report, assuming the report is sufficient. Burkle came in, hemmed and hawed, you know, I don't know what we're supposed to, you know, blah, 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 blah. I didn't have any meetings. The judge listened to it and said, "What have you done?" And the answer is, in 18 months, they haven't done anything. The judge said, "I'm done. I'm finished. You're, you know, you're guilty. Appeal it to the court if you want." So, appeal it to the next level if you want, but as far as I'm concerned, you haven't done anything. And I said, "That's, Judge, all we're asking for is compliance."
Nicole, you have anything for the engineer? Lisa, it's all in Nicole's word. The BP gas station, what are they doing there? Are they all BP? Are they removing the tanks in the building or just, I mean, it's like dead. Nobody's doing nothing now.
They have a demolition permit. The demolition permit was for them to take the canopy down, and that is down. I actually called the other day because I wanted to know, called my office, as I was going past it, to find out why a piece of the coot would still be there. No one seems to know at this point. They're not doing any work. It's been there for about a week now.
Are the tanks still there?
They took, I think they took the tanks.
The tanks are gone already. Yeah, but that wasn't under our permit. That's not a permit.
Right, that's...
Yeah, but they did have, they did have a permit to take the canopy down. The, our understanding is that they are going to leave just the car wash building, so the back building. But, they've not asked, they've not gotten a permit as of yet for the smaller building itself.
In the front, right, okay. And then, are they gonna, if they do that, does the fence come back down? I guess, once, if they're gonna leave the car wash up, I guess they'll leave the...
I don't know what his intention is.
Anything I have is, it's always dark there. They never keep a light on in the parking lot. And now, if you're gonna have nothing but stone and issues of people going in and out from the tenant across the street, they're gonna be using that parking lot too. But, if we could reach out to them, at least keep a couple lights on in the parking lot for safety.
See if we can get it secured.
Right.
Okay. I'll, I'll ask Bill to do that tomorrow.
If not, we'll move on to the solicitor's report. Mr. Pierce?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. You have a copy of my report in the, in the file. Just a couple of things. We addressed the Worsalis and Markin Road property. There's a little summary in there as to what was going on and what the current is. I suspect we'll hear a little bit more after, after this week's adventure. I've been asked to review and revise the snow removal ordinance and the property maintenance code. We will do that. There's no urgency to do that, but we'll certainly have it done well before the next anticipated snow. We've been working with our special counsel regarding the health department and speaking with township manager. He indicates that we've completed pretty much all of our health inspections at this point. So, we are waiting right now for the judge to make a decision on the injunction. And there was a declaratory judgment action that was filed in the county, asking that we be permitted to opt out and continue working as we have done related to the local inspections. The county has not filed an answer yet to the declaratory judgment action. The county has not filed an answer yet to the declaratory judgment action. I did finally receive a request for the lease addendum for the schoolhouse property. I know we had originally talked about six months for the six month extension. I think that their, that their draft indicates a one year, but I will review that and we'll have that for approval at the, at next week's meeting. The developers agreement, as the engineer indicated, the escrow and security agreements, as well as the stormwater management agreements for your plastics project have been drafted and are in the hands of developer for review and signature based on the information that we had from the engineer that the requested escrows and cost estimates were active. The Weiner matter is currently listed for additional testimony on April 26th before Judge Doherty. Hopefully that will conclude that day. And I will have probably for consideration during the month of May, the public remote participation for meetings resolution that we'll need to have. But I expect to have that for review over the next month, we can talk about it at the workshop. Excuse me, for May and then have that hopefully for passage at that time. Everything else is in order as of present.
I just have one, DeWanna property, I don't know, do we have any, or are we still in court with them?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because we now have a Scooby Doo van over there all of a sudden.
It's the mystery machine.
Mystery machine, yeah. I mean, things aren't being taken out, there seems to be different objects coming towards the road. I don't know if we took any pictures.
I do know that Keith is arranging for the drones, drone surveillance of the property so we can take current pictures while the foliage is still down.
Okay, anybody have anything for the solicitor? Now we'll move on to the manager.
Just, just regarding the schoolhouse, has there been any talks or expressions from the school district whether or not they would like to sell it?
I think they're, I think they're talking about it, but they didn't have enough time, you know, with it before the lease came up. But that's, that was certainly part, or will be part of the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else?
We don't want to rush these things.
Well, I think they're willing to do whatever we want.
It's time to sit down and actually.
Meeting ago, we include the historical society in the, the talks.
I believe the vice president of the historical society is also the vice president of the school board, so he was involved in the conversations. Great, Mike?
Yes.
George, have we gotten an appraisal back on that land? Or are they doing it, are we doing it or what?
So we have not. We have not gotten an appraisal of that property. I could ask the board for authorization for that. The, I did get a name of another appraiser, praiser. We typically use Jack Coil and it is my understanding that Jack Coil has prepared an appraisal of that property already for the school district. So we could get a second appraisal or we could ask again to see that appraisal, to see where they're at.
We should ask to see that.
Yeah.
At this point, because they would have to submit that to, they can't do anything without the court approval to sell that property. So we should see that, if it seems within line, we should be.
At this point, that was probably about over a year ago that we had that conversation, so.
We'll follow up on that.
I don't want to beat a dead horse to death, but I, I just think it should be made clear to both parties that the township really cannot engage and look in, looking to see if grants are available unless there's an express interest or something in writing from the school district indicating that they want to sell it to us or to anybody. But, and if that's, that's the case, I would, I, I, I would suggest that this, that we, if the board decides to take the path forward, that we do our own appraisal of the property also.
Yeah, we, we could take a look at what they have already and then take it from there. But you're right, we need to start talking to the individual parties and like Mr. Pierce said, we have an agreement or have something to extend it for another year. If we don't come up with something in a year, then we're, shame on us. But I think we, to about the historical society, see what their interest is of it. Parks plan, the recreation parks plan with the fourth ward having a park back there finally. I mean, we maintain it. I just don't want to spend any money right at this time because we have trees that we're taking care of and the more we're going to keep doing, we still cut the grass and everything, but you see what the intentions are of all the parties. And, and, and I agree, I mean, just make sure we got some kind of an agreement with the school district to say, hey, what's our next path to, is there grants out there for the historical society? Do we include the park or the baseball fields or whatever is back there for the master park plant that they have? I don't know if we're too late for it or not, but that's something we have a year to do. If we don't do something a year, then it goes by the wayside.
Yeah, the issue I've run into so far in searching for a grant is that it is a publicly owned piece of property for, for the good of the public. And the, so the ask of the transfer is to transfer it to another public entity for a public use. So I'm seeing a lot of grants that will allow you to, you know, save land, like from a private, private sale or, or things like that. Just having trouble finding something that fits that niche of like public to public transfer.
Thank you. Okay, if that's said, we will move to our commissioners. Oh, no, we got to go to the manager's report, I forgot to, George. Yeah, I can see that.
Good evening, everybody. The first item I have is escrow resolutions. So far at this point, we only have one escrow resolution. You will notice as you read through the resolution that it's a ratification of a previous action. As we were prepping through the audit, we found a, a release to Chester Water Authority that took place during the midst of COVID where a resolution was not passed. So we'll need to ratify that to make that all approval.
George, one second real quick. What, what's the, what are the company doing back down there now?
They're not doing anything, where, everyone?
Down in Rodney, down by Rodney and Kingsman, I saw them there last week.
Yeah, I have to check.
The only reason I'm saying, if they're starting to dig back up again for some odd reason.
Yeah, I'll check with Putt to see, because we would need another application, escrow, everything, so I'll, I'll see what's going on there. We will have a grant application resolution for the DVR PC TC DI grant. That is for the, the Blue Ball Avenue Boothland Town Center traffic study. We will have a resolution for the DCED Greenways Trails Grant. That is for the CBL construction project that Lisa had mentioned that she's working on with Brian Warren and Brian Sidell. The Act 135 petitioner request, so I've been, as you know, I've been working with the, the county on some activities down in the Limwood Heights neighborhood. And in your binders today is a inspection report for 1901 Huddle. This is a property that's been vacant for about six years in the township. So they are ready to use this as a pilot project for the county redevelopment authority to go through the, through the Act 135 conservatorship program. And they need a petitioner and they're asking for the township to be the petitioner. So we would be the one petitioning the court to have this property taken over as conservatorship, rehabbed and then sold off to put back into productive use. The telephone system, as you know, we had an issue with Windstream where they've notified us at the very last moment that they would no longer be providing us telephone services due to the type of wiring that services the township. We had to react and do our due diligence to find a phone system that we'd be able to utilize. The phone system is 90% up and running and will be 100% up and running by tomorrow. And I asked the board to ratify the previous action approving that. The second ward appointment for SDCA, Commissioner Whitaker has an appointment that you'd like to make for the, for SDCA. So that'll be on the agenda. There's also two recreation fee waivers requested by the recreation department. One for a day long program with Representative Brian Kirkland. And then the other one is, is a little bit more complex, I think we need to talk about. It's, I don't know if you remember last year, there was a, a program that took place over at Maple Zone Ballfields for two weekends in a row, it's the big bounce program. So they are looking to utilize our facilities this year if the board is interested in allowing them to be rented out in that manner. They would need to obviously require, we require them to have insurance, the full blown everything. So in your packets is a little synopsis of the weekends that they'd be looking to do that and the cost structure that Brian came up with, that would make sense if we were to, to rent out to something like that. So we're looking for feedback in general on that as well as, you know, feedback for the waiver if the board is in favor of that. It appears that we have reached an agreement for, with the candidate for the finance director position. So I will have a, a approval of that contract on the, on the agenda for next week. And the other item that I have is, so I've been working with the township engineer, the township traffic engineer and the township planner on various things that we've kind of had outstanding from a planning perspective, zoning perspective and a couple other, you know, problem areas. And one of the things that, that has come up is kind of a low hanging fruit thing that we can do is take a look at the zoning map and address some amendments to the zoning map. We have a lot of areas that have been identified over the past couple of years as like parcels that are owned by one owner that may have one or two of the parcels that are combined to be like a residential where the rest are commercial. Some areas that, you know, don't necessarily make sense that they're, they're non-conforming due to residential zonings when they're in commercial areas, things like that. So I'd like authorization from the board to go ahead and prepare an ordinance amending the zoning map. And then what I'd like to do is meet with you all individually and then in some small work groups to go over some of these properties in, in your wards to talk about them and, and make sure that everything is in line with, that it's moving in the right direction. And that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of the manager? George? George, you went on Huddle Avenue with this Act 135. Was this ever on a repo, not a repository, but the judicial sale or anything? Is there, is there, somebody own this?
It's an owner who has walked away from the property. It is delinquent in taxes for, I believe it's from 2018 forward. So it meets the qualifications for, for this program. We haven't, they haven't responded to certified letters, things like that.
I mean, just looking at some of the report and if it never sold out a judicial sale for anybody, which would the grant cover if it ever had to be torn down through the county or?
Yeah, so all that we would do in this is our, our, the expectation of the township is that we would be able to send someone to court and would sign the document that says that we are the petitioner. Then everything else is being handled through the redevelopment authority. So they, they line up the conservator, they, they acquire the funding to do the renovations or possibly tear the property down depending on what's the, you know, as they get into a better inspection. We were able to do this preliminary inspection through a administrative search warrant due to the property being, having open violations and being vacant.
Okay. That said, we'll move on to the commissioners. Vice President, Madam Vice President, Nicole Whitaker.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Just a few things, as our manager mentioned. Georgia was actually under your, your tab, it wasn't under mine, that's okay. So you have the report for recreation, the bounce, bounce, big bounce of America. The Recreation Committee did review and everyone pretty much was in agreement with the, with the cost that they're proposing. Again, this is a proposal, so we can definitely discuss it more, send your feedback or comments for that. And then State Representative Kirkland is hosting a cancer event, so cancer awareness luncheon on Friday, April the 29th here at the Township Building from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And he is also asking for a request, for a waiver for that event. It's regarding grants, we're wait, awaiting decisions on approximately $1.5 million in grants. We also have pending applications totaling $300,000. So we'll see where we go with those. Any updates from the library, Joe? I didn't, I didn't attend the last meeting.
No, it wasn't, it, they really didn't cover a whole lot of new information. They did ask that we contact Representative Kirkland's office and I did send him a letter and I also talked to him personally about getting in touch that he could also support the application for the RCAP grant.
Okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. At three. Busy, it looks like a busy month for the trash refunds at least. The financial reports will be available next week. The police report is available this evening. We did, we did have four applicants under the civil service tests, all of them passed the written test. And they will be conducting the agility test the, this Saturday and the, then the interviews will be early next week. So we're hoping, you know, for some positive results on that. And I did earlier today, I have not heard back from anybody in the fire department about any concerns about the incentive program. I asked, so I forwarded it to the solicitor today and asked for some, you know, response over the next week or so to see if we can handle it the way we think we might be able to, to encourage all of the firefighters. The, the problem with the program as stated in the old, in the state law with the EIT and the real estate taxes is, for example, juniors don't generally have real estate taxes and probably don't generate enough income to, for the EIT to be significant, a significant incentive to them. So we're looking at a, as you all know, you all have the incentive program proposal. We hope that that will, if, if we can do it, that it would incentivize people to participate more with the fire companies. So that's all I have.
I, I did look at initially, I do have some concerns because I know that there were some municipalities that tried to do it in that fashion and. I, I did look at initially. I do have some concerns because I know that there were some municipalities that tried to do it in that fashion and they ran into some difficulties. It, it turned into essentially payment and that caused triggered a lot of other issues. The other concern that I have is we don't have, you know, that proposal indicates that there are a number of firefighters that don't live within the township. I don't know that we have the ability to regulate those incentives for non-residents township. I have to look at that in comparative, compared to statute itself. Usually those types of incentives are related to real estate taxes and also to E I T relief. But I'm not sure that we have the ability to go beyond that. Uh, and I know there have been some cases that have been problematic when things like gift cards have been utilized or, uh, monetary payments. They have determined, uh, that that may be biative of the agent salary issue. So I, I will take a look at it.
That's okay. Thank you. Um, just a couple of items. 900 Township Line Road, 400 Trichester Avenue and 30, 30, 30, 33 Market Street. They all have May 13th, 22 extensions. Uh, 1405 Meeting House Road. Um, I believe there's some actions going to be required for that, for, for additional, uh, approval. That's the Boothman Firehouse for the reverse subdivision. 8105 Bethel Road, it's still on the review and 65, 650 Cherry G Road. There's no action, um, at this time. They have an extension until July 30th, 2022. That's the housing developing, the housing development in, um, the third ward. And then 3709 Trichester Avenue, it's still in, in a definite, uh, extension. So I really don't have anything else to report on other than, uh, my street study within Gardendale. We're going to be, we're going to be sending out a survey letter. Uh, just asking the, the question, asking the residents that live back there, what are their most concerns about traffic? Other than that, I have nothing else to report on unless anybody has any questions for me.
I mean, I don't want to.
We discussed this before.
I mean, nothing could be done. I just want to make sure we're on top of it. I know you've been aware of it. It's just, I'm next to the end. We'll see a hospital somewhere.
That sign's been up for what? Probably close to a year now?
Hasn't sold one yet.
What?
Do get calls every once in a while from realtors, uh, asking if those are, uh. Yeah. And the answer is every time that it is currently one lot with the house on.
Michael, there's, there's really no official action. The work that they can, can we or? The, the only other.
Quite frankly, if somebody calls and says, are there buildable lots, I would send them over to get the rest of the lots done over. Kate's Glen, yeah.
So speaking of Kate's Glen, my only other concern is if we can get the, you know, try to get that signed out. It's been up there for a significant amount of time now and, um, it, the area can use a cleaning. So we have to reach out every month, then that's what, that's what we need to do. But thank you.
Thank you. Um, highway and sanitation, um, there's, we're going to have a couple of positions, uh, go up full-time positions and then our, uh, summer part-time, we're going to try to hire a few again, but, um, temporary positions. Talking with, uh, some of the guys and, uh, other people, the, the starting salary is what's the after them positions. So I'm going to ask the board if they would mind if I got in conversation with the union and see if they cut that in half, maybe waive it, do, do something with that to maybe make the job a little more attractive. Right on the board has it. Now the, the full-time position. Would require a CDL license. And the, the salary we want them to start at is it's like seven dollars lower than what a, a full-time employee makes once they finish the probation. I mean, that's a massive.
Would, would, would this mean we have to open up the contract?
Yeah, well, I amend the contract, but I, I want to talk to the union first to see if they even consider.
What are contracts due now anyway? So we'll.
Well, it's coming up. Yeah. We're starting to go, you know, it, it ends this year, but we're trying to hire now and it's hard enough to get people to begin with. Uh, I just think that's one, one of the
I think that's everywhere. I mean.
That's, uh, I, I think they might be interested because that, that was put in years and years and years ago, and it's just never been taken out. I mean, me and George talked about it a little bit. George, you agree it's, well, too steep, ain't it?
Now with the labor market is that the labor market is great. So, um, you know, I think that we may encounter issues hiring people at some of the rates that we have currently assigned. Specifically in that position.
The rate, once they make probation is fair market, it's getting there. It's seven dollars below that. The store, it takes about seven years to get there. Right, am I correct? Yeah, it's, it's, it's a long time to get there too. They, they get tiny bumps for a long time. That's, I think, a discouraging point in hiring new employees. I'm, I'm just asking to open up conversation. I'll bring everything back please.
Okay. Is that it?
The trash study, I think we're real close to a final, uh, route. Hopefully maybe by next week we might have that. And I think it's something that's going to make the routes way more productive. And I think, you know, employees, I don't think they're going to be upset, but I think it's going to work. Yeah. Sure, we're recorded. I have on file. I have a copy. I'll send you that like I do every month for yous. So I have, unless somebody has any questions.
No, I just, I think one of the goals that we talked about, we're starting on the Stormwater Authority.
Yeah.
And I think, I think.
I mentioned that again. I'm trying to set up a meeting with them and us.
I think we should just pursue that throughout the year to see what, to see if we can get it done.
Yes, I agree.
With the sewer authority?
Yes.
Okay. Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Biaco? Now we'll go to my report. Uh, report should be on file next week. The emergency management report was in there. Everybody have a copy of it, George? With emergency management, because it did come to us. The T C I D or whatever that grant is, I make sure, yeah, T C D I that's in the works right now for the Boothland Town Center, which is actually Blue Ball Avenue. I like to reach out to Pendop, uh, while we're working on this grant at the same time. Twice in a week I've, um, gotten phone calls. I witnessed one, but I got one the other day. A tanker was trying to make a left from Chi Avenue onto Blue Ball and had it all messed up again. If we could at least reach out before the grant, maybe get some signs up there to have no left-hand turns there or whatever it may be since it's our road, but it's a mess. They, they hit one of our signs, the speed limit signs over there, and they were just shaking it so that one tractor trailer could get through. That's something I want to reach out to Pendot just to say, hey, what can we do now? Because the last email I got and phone call I talked to her, there was a, a tanker trying to make a left or it did make it. It took a while from Chi Avenue onto Blue Ball. And that's part of it. That was part of the study in the Boothland Town Center is it's a mess over there. And that's why we're going for the grant from Blue Ball Avenue up to the Beeson, which is up to I-95 for the roundabout and everything else. So, um, that's the other thing I wanted to question was, and I don't know if this is a Mr. Pierce's question. It's springtime again, ATV issues, the same areas. Um, are we permitted to just get a sign that says no ATVs with the ordinance number underneath it in the areas that we have the issues on? I mean, we could put them in our right of ways or whatever. Not that it's probably not going to do a darn thing, but at least we have something.
On whose property?
I guess ours on the streets and the right of ways.
No.
Our streets.
No.
Why? On the, in the grass area?
It, it's, we have an ordinance that, you know, I, I don't think you can.
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I mean, I see it in other towns where it says, well, Lower Chi has its cell phone and the ordinance on that, but.
Which has been found unenforced.
Right. So be, because they don't have an ordinance for real or?
No, because the ordinance is not enforceable.
Enforceable, but our ordinance for the ATVs are though, right?
It, it is, but I don't know that you can go put. I don't know the answer to that question often.
I don't think it's going to help. I mean, if you put it up, there's still going to be flying all over the place. I know it's summertime, springtime, the chief, I've already talked to the chief. They'll get to a four-wheelers out. And it's the same areas in my ward. I mean, it's along the tracks, Helms Manor, everywhere. I mean, I just figured maybe we could. So I figured it up, bringing it up. So. Give it a shot. Other than that, that's it. Anybody else have anything? Now we need a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Pours, sort of.